We're chasing our tail these vendors. Just keep.
Oh, remember, we're in a poor neighborhood.
Oh, I know. You guys are good with your truck you have already contracted before you do that. You guys are good.
Yeah, yeah.
You guys are good. No worries. Which I need to get with the pre-construction day to the generator. Or you can just say French and go at it. I'll do it like you want.
Yeah, someday we can drive over.
What's that?
Someday we can drive over.
Absolutely, yeah. That's what they will have you, you and a couple of people come over and we'll sit down, go along the lines, give a little spec. A lot of times if there's something we need to reference, we go right on the board.
Good evening. Glad you're glad to make it. Today is Tuesday, February first, and a few minutes after six, we're going to start our work session. So if we stand and we do the pledge allegiance, we can start the beat already. Let's allegiance, we do by United States of America. Republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. We'd have a little bit of silence to honor the military, our firefighters, road workers, and sheriff's deputies as they serve our community here and abroad. Thank you. The seven words, can we have a roll call, please?
Trustee McGuire.
Present.
Trustee McGloughlin.
Yes, present.
Trustee Matt.
Present.
Okay, so the work session, we're going to start our whole business. And we've had several discussions. The first thing on the list is making a schedule for budget meetings. I sent an email out and kind of waited to get going on it, but we need to have a meeting for fire, a meeting for general, a meeting for roads, and then a wrap-up meeting. So it'll be four meetings. That order. We're willing to start maybe, well, that's January, February. Maybe next Thursdays, we'll do four Thursdays in a row, starting with February tenth. I mean, what time do people want to start? Five, six, seven? I'm flexible.
It would have to be after five, so six.
Six works good for you. Okay, what about you, Jim?
That works.
Six.
So you're basically taking the schedule from your email and pushing it back a week.
Yes. Do we have a, huh? What'd you say?
I can't make the ten.
You can't make it? Okay, so what name's good for you then?
Well, I thought we were going to go with Stone's seventeen. I have the seventeen. Or if she can't make the ten, can we just make it another day that week and then the remainder are Thursdays?
Okay, so she can't do the ten. How about the nine?
I could do the nine. Okay. I'm okay with the ninth as six. Are you, Jim?
So we're moving into the nine?
Just for that one?
No, just for, yeah.
Will that be road?
Yes, so road on the ninth. General on the seventeenth.
Yes.
Fire on the twenty-fourth. And then March third, wrap up. Okay, next thing on old business is key fobs and locksmith work in Jefferson Township. Kind of like when you have tenants move out or you have new, you know, you change people around. There's a lot of keys that have been floating around for quite a while. We did get the key fob, we did get the key fobs in our access and they are starting to be activated. It's a good thing. We're slowly getting those put out to the people. And we'll have a system where they have to sign for those key fobs. So we know who has them, there's a number on them, and who has access, you know, document. If you try to get in a door you're not allowed to get into, anytime you access a key fob, it is documented. And then the keys themselves will be backed up. But I do feel that we need to bring a locksmith in, kind of, I started off with one, but he was just way too expensive. We backed off him and we liked the price we're getting from the locksmith, local guy in Heimberg, Davis Locks. His grandfather started the business, the grandson's running it now. But you know what price he quoted us, Greg?
Sixty-five dollar trip charge and ten to twenty dollars per lock, depending on how complicated it is.
Okay. Well, I just, just want to talk about that. I mean, just, we're not ready to do that tomorrow or anything, but we kind of need to decide on, you know, what locksmith keys will be the same, whether we'll make separate, all that good stuff. So, but we're all looking into that and to improve the security. And then when he does that, Greg, we also want to make sure that he does the file cabinets. For bully files and stuff, those keys, there was just a few of those keys floating around. So we can rekey the filing cabinets for the bully files.
I'll check to see if he does that type of work.
Uh, the next thing, anybody else got any comments on that, Jim? Anything else you want to say on that? Sheila? So we had, the next thing on there is pavement work in the Birdland area. Jim, do you know if we ever saw a quote, a price, have we seen any cost estimates on this work? Have you seen anything?
I think it had to go out to bid.
Okay.
So. I know that Walter was talking to Dayton, but I don't know for the outcome.
Okay, it did, so guys, familiar with Birdland area, Birdland area is really chopped up if who has what area. I know from Plowhead, it'd be like, for instance, if you see the picture here, you go down the street, hard into the city of Dayton. Then you have several houses, there's Jefferson Township, then it goes back to city Dayton, then it goes back to, bounces back and forth, back and forth. So doing this, the really only way to do this project is to do it with the city of Dayton. And do it as a combined effort. So the communication was started and it was approved to go ahead and do it this summer. I just am not hesitant, I'm a little hesitant on how much this is, how much money we have in the budget. I'm leery in spending any vast amounts of funds until we get it handled on, get the budget done, and that kind of thing. So I do plan on reaching out to the city of Dayton and see where we stand on getting a quote, what kind of price there is to do this work. And they did imply that in the beginning they were available, willing to do it this year or next year. But if we get a price, at least we'll get a know, an idea of what we're, how much money, how much cash we're dealing with. Any comments, questions? Jim, Sheila, Tracy?
Actually, we need to look at next year so that we can make sure that we have money in the budget.
Yes.
Of course, just trying to force that into this year's budget.
I agree. That was my, that was my initial response.
Yes, yeah, we'll have time to plan because it seems to me that a lot of that back part of that is Dayton. So we want to make sure that the way the cost is cut up is going to be proportional to what Jefferson needs as opposed to...
Well, they've already got it set up and it's square footage. So from that line to that one, that's twenty-six by four hundred and fifty-three, it'll be square footage. Now, I don't know if there's any cove pipes, any curb sidewalk repair. We, but we need to step out and continue this conversation with the city of Dayton. But just the reminder, reframe it that we're not ready to jump into this in 2022 yet. We want to do it, it needs to be done. That, that section of the township roads are in bad shape and it doesn't even tend it to. So any comments, Jim?
Nope, I don't know where we're at on the numbers. I mean, I think that's the next step.
Okay, okay, thank you. Okay, so next on the agenda, camera access in Jefferson Township. We made some progress on that today. Buckeye was on site. And they need a PO, of course, moving forward, whenever we do anything, there's a PO up front. You don't spend money without a PO. I mean, that's, to me, that's life, that's where I work, that's, you know, it just gives the office, you know, who's, who's that being billed to? Where's that money coming from? What's it for? Can we rebuild? All that information. So anyway, they, doing any work going forward, they know, as in Buckeye knows, there has to be a PO up front. So that was not done. I thought it was, but they need a PO. They gave us, it took about four hours. I had a conversation with a guy today, but, so we are on, it will be long, but we'll have the camera access back along.
Well, with that, I talked to Brian today and David Peoples, the person that's supposed to do the cameras. He had an emergency that he had to go out of town, so he won't be back until next week. So if they don't respond, it's for that reason.
Okay.
Because he's the person that's going to do that.
What's his name?
Uh, David Peoples. Also, they're willing to, or they're going to turn over all access of the cameras to us. So when he comes in, that'll be part of what he does. And provide training to one person and then we'll have like a step-by-step process of how to do it ourselves.
Yes.
So that way we can take that one and continue to pay for that service.
Okay. Thank you, Sheila. The next one I believe is...
The PO is in the cabinet, ready for soon.
Oh, I signed, yeah, I started signing. The next one I believe is yours, Sheila, IT, you're over IT. And so residents, sadly enough, we've had a company by the name of Buckeye Business take care of our computers and our computer issues. And they have given us notice that they are no longer going to provide that service to us. So we need to find a new vendor. We've got to have that for security and repairs and this thing, that thing. I know there's some changes that want to be made in that, try to use, there again. Buckeye, there's a lot of things Buckeye is doing, and they're talking to Brian Peters. Why are you having me do this? He questioned the things that he was billing us for and a lot of things that we could have done ourselves back in the day, and why aren't you doing this yourselves? You know, especially when you do that and then we end up owing over twenty thousand dollars. So it makes him scratch his head. So anyway, Sheila, do you have any input on that IP?
Yes, so just so, I'm not sure if Jim knows that. The, there are several township that want to come together and work in with a pool, or as a pool to have like one IT company service all townships because we all pretty much have the same need. And so I have a meeting on Friday on Zoom with several of the township, Miami Township, Nelson Township, and a couple others to discuss that process. So that's where we're at with that because Buckeye is ready to cut ties. However, they were kind enough to say that they would come in and whatever IT company we do decide to go with, that they would be willing to kind of get them up to par as far as where they left off at and where the new company will come in. So that's kind of where we're at with that.
So at this point in time, we're talking with other, other people in need of an IT supplier. We've not sent out any kind of request for proposal, we've not done any scope of work, any hugging on a jet?
No, we're just, we're just looking at a pool.
Yes.
So we can all, and each township would only pay their portion of that need. So Jefferson is a lot smaller than Miami Township, so we wouldn't pay as much as they would, you know. So it would be based off of that. But they're very excited about this project because as township, we should be able to work together in pools like that because we get a better rate.
Sounds good. Any questions, Jim?
Nope.
Okay, next thing on old business on the agenda for the work session is using electronic time cards. We did have a resolution that we tabled the first meeting, of course, that was a month ago. And rightly so. It's going to take, there again, that's not just a quick, quick flip of a switch. It's going to take a little bit of time. Everybody, you're going to have to have department heads, get educated, and then they're going to have to train all the people. And we needed where the employees sign off that they've been trained, they understand that I don't get paid if I don't sign in or I sign out. And you know, and just what they need to do there. So I think we're going to try to go, did I hear Traxmore?
Well, currently we're with Traxmark.
Yes.
And, and so for now, we're just going to kind of hold on to that.
Yes.
Because the employees haven't been trained on it, how to do any of that. So for now, we're going to hold on to that because we were also looking at trying to see if Paycor offers like the same, like scheduling and tracking like that. Whichever one will offer the best service with the township so that the fire department can do their scheduling and their time. And perhaps would also help Tracy when it came time to enter in their, or I'm sorry, their hours.
Well, and then the fire department can, I mean, outside looking in, guys, you know, I mean, I don't, outside looking at what you guys do, I would think that you want those two together. So you have a, you make up a schedule and John Smith's supposed to do this day and Bob does this day and everything. And I think I'd want that timed tied into the time clock so I know if they work where they're supposed to. Does that make sense? Or am I thinking that out of my field? What do you guys think?
That makes sense, yes.
Have we, has anybody talked to Paycor about, do they do?
Well, we got some quotes.
Okay.
We got some, Tracy was kind enough to get some quotes, so we have quotes. But we haven't like started that process. It's been a whole lot going on, so we want to make sure we take our time before we jump into that and each trustee need to see what, you know, where we're at and what it looks like.
Okay. Okay, so on a timeframe on that, I'm about to see us make it, make a decision, be ready to do something, have some paperwork ready, a resolution written by the next meeting in two weeks. Would that be possible?
I don't think so because remember, we still have to like, even if we did stay with Traxmark, or if we, they would still have to be trained. And we have to get them to sign off the paperwork that they were training.
I don't mean the training being done in two weeks, Sheila. I bet that we would have the resolution written to start with whoever picked, picked one of them. Maybe by the next meeting, we can have, this one's going to cost this much, this is going to cost this much to make a decision. It's going to still take time to get everybody trained. I don't mean that everybody's said and done by then.
And I guess what I'm thinking, correct me, because I want to make sure that I'm right. In that process, the trustees would need to kind of communicate with each other whether they agree to that bid or not. And we can't...
Do it in the meeting, yes.
Right, and so that we would be able to do that until the next meeting whether or not we want to go with Traxmark. Does that, that sound right?
Yes.
That sound right to you, Jim? I mean, currently I'm...
It's not going to be a quick decision.
Yeah.
No, no, so, okay.
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 But we can, you know, revisit it and to it to see, you know, if we, if we got new information from Traxmark. You think that, what do you think, Jim?
See, the numbers, I mean, the rationale behind some of this was to take responsibilities off the administrative assistant position up front. That was, payroll was probably half, half that job. So the cost against doing it ourselves, let's see if it justifies savings money.
Well, you know, thinking about history, so several years back, we had the administrative system. It doesn't seem like we had many mistakes in payroll. We didn't hear of situations where people were being paid when they didn't work, when they didn't work and they didn't get paid. Or they got a raise months ago and never had actually received the pay, they'd been short paid for months and months. It seems like it's happened since here in twenty twenty-one, just reasonable past year. It seems like that's gotten worse and worse, and that's one reason, I think, the main reason. I know there's still, there's a cost savings in there, but I think we eliminate the human error in the problem we're having in payroll is we want to get our employees paid right. And do it electronically, so they electronically clock in and the system's set up. You work, you work this many hours and then it goes to Paycor and Paycor's like, here's your, here's what you got, here's your deductions, blah, blah, blah. Here's basically, here's your deposit. Trying to avoid that human, I know we want to see which, so you compared it, we used to have administrative assistant do it and what that cost us. Okay, what's this going to cost us? But I think we're also better taking the human error aspect out of it. It's, we had different, we had good times with humans doing it, we've had bad times with humans doing it. So kind of eliminate that human error problem. Any comments, Eric?
So how are you going to track approved vacation? Because right now, we use it with an employee action form. So if somebody wants to ask for time off, they've got to have their direct report, sign off on vacation. So that's a checks and balance.
Yes, so I use the system, one of my coworkers, they use Pay, they use Paycom. They use Paycom and on that, when you, there's a, there's, on you go on your timesheet and there's a spot in there where you hit another tab and you can, you request time off. You can go up to twelve months in advance and you request time off. And of course, like this fire department, the chief would have to approve it and blah, blah, blah. But that's how it's tracked and it, then it goes on the schedule. You see that on the schedule now the road and months down the road, up to twelve months on this time, this person has got approved this time off. Yes?
They have that on the computer system, you know, where you scan in, the clock in.
Yes.
Just like you explained where you can put in for time off.
Yeah, that's what mine, mine does that, yep. So I, I think we can, I think whatever system we use, I mean, if it's an existing Paycor or Traxmark system, that's probably already incorporated. Have you guys, have you guys seen that in, in your system at all? Yeah, okay. That's a good question. We need to make sure that we can take care of that. Any comments, questions on electronic time cards? That's it for old business and what we have on here. Anybody else want to discuss anything with old business in the, in the work session before we go any further? Do we want to talk about the, can we talk about the fire action at all?
Oh, okay, I didn't work session. Okay, I didn't know if that was on business or not, but...
Yes, it is.
Okay, yes. And so what I handed you all was the package that we received from leasing two regarding the tanker truck. And, and what was going on, what is currently going on is the initial contract that was signed off on, was signed off on by you two trustees and the woman. Well, since Mr. Mann is no longer here, they needed to update it one. And so if you would like to, would you like to kind of give up, you know, get a...
So the contract that was signed is still valid, it's not, it's still a good contract. The truck is still in the time slot, production slot, timeline, all that. The only thing that came up with it was you guys did a prepaid discount, a hundred percent prepaid discount. And per the contract, that was to be paid, we paid within thirty days of contract signing, which was, I think, October seventh. So we're behind a few months on that. So I didn't get scored really bad by the front office ladies. They were really nice to me because I'm nice to them. So they read me in the numbers and everything, fortunately, nothing changed as far as the cost for the prepaid discount. It remained the same as it is on the contract. So knock on wood, thank goodness, that did not change. So basically, the only thing that really needs to do is a note with Tracy and Sheila at the trustee show with Brad Myers, the person that we, you guys worked with. And we kind of huddled up and kind of got everyone on the same page. And Brad got everything up to date as far as the loan contract for you guys to get the money to pay for the truck. So did you get, you got to copy that, right? Tracy, right, I believe?
I've got, I've seen the body.
Okay. So everything went to Sheila and she dispersed it to everybody else. I think from our conversation, she's going to be there and make a point with that. So basically, all it's got to be, really does is be followed through line by line with Blue Week on the signatures of where it is applicable to trustees or the clerk. Slash fiscal, I'm sorry. And I can walk you through that if needed, or if Tracy was wanting, excuse me, Sheila, if you would like to take it from there.
No.
No.
And you might want to, this...
Yes. So there's one more other document for us for documentation sake. So you got papers under HDSC, which saved quite a bit of money on the co-op. And basically, that, your truck is identifying, a specific identifier in that system of what it is on this document here. I don't know if you all see it. It's a generic format of it. It, your truck is what it is, but we've specked out per specifications. It's just a formality for us, for auditors, and they say, hey, you guys have this truck built, you have the paperwork for it? Yes, here it is. Okay, next truck, and that's all it is. Nothing. I know it says Dana Maxwell and twelve fifty pump, but you guys changed that, which is fine per the documentation. So that just needs signed by any of you up there.
It doesn't matter those days, October nineteenth?
That's fine.
So are we signing, okay, we've already signed the purchase agreement.
Correct.
The follow-through was the rate on the financing on December thirty-first.
Okay.
So are we doing another purchase agreement or just, or just the updated finance?
Updated financing, that's it. That's all, do you guys have, have to do with the CD?
I have a question. I remember having a conversation with you about, it was like we need to respond within thirty days and then we needed to do a walkthrough?
Pre-construction, and I'm going to get with Chief on that, we'll discuss that and set that up and get that taken care of.
Okay.
So what do you need tonight?
So if I may come up, that's okay. So on the documentation here, you guys all have this one out here that you see. Basically, this is the directions per exhibit as it goes through.
Okay.
All right, so.
A, B's, all of those are attached.
So the first one's lease purchase agreement, which explains to you what that is. It's the first part of it, very top of some lease purchase agreement. So on the end of that, that page here, it tells exactly who needs to sign it, these two trustees need to sign it. Now, the lease or we're leasing to, we blank. Once you guys all sign this and Sheila emails it or sends it back to leasing to, they'll fill that in and you guys will get all that copies and all that documentation. Any questions so far?
So are you going to walk, are you going to walk the original paperwork down the road so we can sign it?
Yes, I'm moving it right now so you guys can all sign it, sign it, that, which you guys are intending to do this evening.
Yes.
Can we sign it now?
No, we, we're already ready to meet. We can sign it now.
We already decided, so we can sign it.
Oh.
Okay, okay, let's do that then.
So on the first one, the lease agreement on the last page, lease to... Yes, lease to trustees, where it says trustee, trustee, need to be signed by two of the three trustees.
So we only need one, so this work off of one. Yeah, one.
Page four.
Yeah, page four.
Blue pen.
Yep. Everybody's got blue pens. I got like six of them. Okay, then the next one, if that's all done, is exhibit A, resolution verified. Okay, then the next one, if that's all done, uh, is exhibit A, resolution verified, extracted minutes. These need to fill out and sign by the two trustees as well and the secretary clerk, uh, per directions.
Who's the secretary clerk?
So where it says by, the name, the date?
Do I just need to?
Uh, yeah. Yeah, just print your name, sign.
Exhibit A, right?
Yes, ma'am. Forget the guys, we've been taking a few minutes, so.
So was this, um, opinion letter sent to the council?
Yes, that is, there's one document, I think that's the next one, yes. It just needs to put on the letterhead and everything.
I know he's not going to sign until he gets our, our signature, he's not, he's done that.
That's all. Printing on attorney's letterhead and signed by attorney, written in the paper. So that would be set aside to you, that's your attorney, so, exhibit D. Okay, so when we want to, exhibit C, uh, again, that is script there to override. That's the entered date, which should put in respect to the required, you have four, signed dated by leasing up right in the C.
Exhibit C?
Yes, ma'am.
Certificate asked to object.
Yes, ma'am.
So what is that about?
Um, basically they're saying that you, you're the trustee in Jefferson Township and official pass, he says the officer was responsible for executing the order, but we, on behalf of leasing, lease purchase agreement, uh, dated for February fifth, two thousand and twenty-two. Basically, you're entering an agreement to this, this, this contract.
So you guys have a little B I N on the next page?
Yes, we'll provide that with the.